Being seven o'clock like the open and planning board meeting for April twentieth, twenty twenty-two. All right, see you at the public hearing coming up at seven oh five. We want to do a couple of the A and R's that we have. Do the Athena's one on Charlie crossing first?
Yeah, the first one to Charlie crossing is the same subdivision lots they had originally approved. Requested it's only change on the one lot, so this is actually. Making the lots legal separate lots so that the zoning change. What will be some separate law, so the law configuration is exactly the way that they posed it on the zoning change. So the intent is to sell lot three.
So making three lots?
Yeah, they're making three lots from one lot. This is the lot that they had requested the zone change. So these want to get this done and get it filed before town meeting. So this is still standalone lot. So there's no confusion with residents and the attorney general on which lot we're referring to.
All right, any questions from the board? All right, Karen and Seena, do you have a motion to approve the A and R for Charlie crossing?
Make motion to approve the Charlie crossing A and R.
Second, are all those in favor?
We have a couple minutes if we want to take ten seconds now or?
Yeah.
Hi.
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 You send them there?
No. He didn't approach our property or our north side of Detroit to do a survey.
Oh, the date today?
No, no, just what I said.
No, um, they only put them all ones. I just saved it and I forgot to sign up. And you're right.
That's sidetracked.
Only one. Don't try to confuse me. Let me do two things at the same time.
This one.
Yeah, this is the second sub. A and R is is a larger parcel on Blood Road. Basically, they're covering cutting a smaller parcel out of the larger parcel. So this is unusual shape, but it is a conforming lot. It's going to be almost nine and a half acres on Blood Road. Maybe you have the adequate funding and everything. There's still the remaining lot on Blood Road. It wraps around it. It's a much larger parcel. So they're carving one new lot out of the larger possible land here.
Are they removing access to that back portion?
No, it still has access over here on Blood Road. And that one actually has, well, it has access because it's such a large parcel of land. It has access over here. And then it has another smaller access further down Blood Road around the rest of these other three lots.
Oh, yeah.
This is not usual shaped lot, but it does have access. I mean, I assume probably someday they'll, you know, use the access down here versus going all the way around to weapons and everything that are on the property.
I was gonna say, they can't really build anything on it because it wouldn't be this. Is this is this frontage here?
Yeah, it's like, yeah, this is actually where they have the furnishing. Then they have this little piece here too. So this does meet the bylaws for this larger law. It's just it's an unusual shape law, but it does comply with the bylaws. They have the hundred and.
You have the new lot.
Twenty-one.
Yes, there's a hundred and seventy-seven.
So they have just conform. You know, chances are some of you on the builder probably coming from further down the road and avoid all that risk. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you can have frontage here and then you can have a driveway somewhere else. The requirement is that law that the driveway has to be on the front.
Yeah. Well, machine.
Okay, make a motion. We approve the A and R Blood Road.
Second, that all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
I'm staying.
John's signing right now.
That's not how I read it publicly. All right. All right, next agenda item, public hearing for Gary in a Maratti Gary Jackson was LLC cycling modification of four fifty-one Worcester Road and five Glenmere Road. In accordance with sections two hundred dash three point two, two hundred seven point one B and two hundred dash seven point two, the shopping is on a bylaw. The traffic language of holding your motor appearing on Wednesday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-two at seven thirty PM by zoom meeting ID number two one one two nine two. Two one one two nine three two two five seven and in person meeting at thirty-seven Main Street, off the mask on five oh seven request of Gary in a Maratti. Four fifty-one Worcester Road, Child and Master on five oh seven for a site plan application contribution every two thousand nine hundred seventy-five square foot building. Four fifty-one Worcester Road and five Glenmore Road along the site plan improvements and associate parking. The property contains a property nine and a half plus and minus acres. The property is at at four fifty-one Worcester Road has an existing car dealership. And the property at five Glenmore Road has a single family home that proposed building. Will replace the existing building with associated site work and parking. The properties are located at four fifty-one Worcester Road and five Glenmore Road. The property ideas are assessed map thirty block A lot fourteen point two map map thirty-eight block A lot fourteen point three in the zone community business. This meeting of a traffic complaint board will be conducted in person by remote participation. Specific information. In the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public indoor parties with a right and a requirement to attend this meeting. We call on the town shot website at www dot townshot dot net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting, they do so in the following manner. Video participation, HTTPS, calling to access backslash zoom dot US backslash. Two one one two nine three two two five seven being ID two one one two nine three two two five seven for an access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. Copies of the site plan application are available for inspection at the planning board office and town clerk's office during regular business hours. The application is also posted on the town website under planning board. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at time and place designated. All right, Gary, if you want to do your presentation.
I just want to check if that's John, you hear us okay? John Smith?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, great. Okay, thanks.
Gary, want to do a presentation?
I think you guys already went through everything pretty much, right?
I just read the public here. That was it. That's all we've done because I think because of with some, we hadn't got anything back from our engineer.
Yeah.
So we didn't. This is our first time opening the public hearing. So if you just want to give a quick overview of your proposed.
I were planning to just put a classroom showroom.
Yeah.
Just to display a few cars inside with office space to conduct business on.
Yeah.
And we're also looking to demo the buildings that are on it.
Yep.
To create more space for parking. Which is all in our plan.
Okay, yeah.
We're just looking to expand on to the property that you're fired behind us.
Yes. Okay.
Quick question. I think I believe John, you've already taken into consideration new DOT right away, the change in the right away.
Uh, yeah, we were working with uh, Mast DOT. So they were communicating with uh, Peter. And he has all email chains of what they're gonna do there for that project.
And I apologize, Pete. I realize you're on the Zoom call. If you want to add anything as far as the site and stuff like that, go right ahead.
I can give a little presentation if you want.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so so like Gary had mentioned, and you had mentioned, the lot is made up of two lots equal the total area of eighty thousand square feet in size. Both lots are in the CB district, which is a community business. So what we're proposing to do is we're proposing to remove the single family house in the existing structures along four fifty-one Worcester Road. We're going to replace that with a twenty-nine hundred square foot building for display purposes in office. We will, the lot will be on private well as well as private septic, which is shown on the plan. The septic's in the back left corner. The well is on the left-hand side of the property. We show a hundred and sixty-four display spaces. The display spaces are roughly eight by eighteen in size and we show a hundred and sixty-four of those. We show sixteen parking spaces around the building. I think ten in the back of the building and six in the front. The handicap would be in the back because of grading. Proposed drainage, the entire impervious area or parking area will be collected by catch basins. Directed to a manhole or a storm scepter and then directed into the two underground basins under the pavement. As you can see, they're up there right up against Worcester Road. So those are two underground basins. And then there is an open basin that runs along the side of Glenmere. That will connect into the drainage on Glenmere. We are going to upgrade. The drainage per Graves comments where the runoff was going to now. Right now it goes to an existing drop inlet right on the side. Of Glenmere, but that is basically built out of like a block structure. So we're going to replace that with a precast concrete structure. Like Gary had mentioned, we have been talking to Mast DOT. And what we show on the plan is us tying into the reconstruction of Route twenty. It came to my, it came to my, Randy had explained to me that there was some concerns from the neighbors. So I had landscape architect beef up the landscaping along the back of the property line and along the. Along the side of Gil Glenmere. So we have done that. You should have a copy of that new landscaping plan. Also, I met with the fire chief yesterday. There was another concern about access to the fire. And I have met with him and he has no concerns. I think he was supposed to email Randy. An email regarding that meeting we had yesterday.
Yes.
That's basically it.
Did receive a confirmation email from the fire chief today. They're satisfied with the fire truck access on the property.
All right, thank you, Pierre, for your presentation. Are there any questions from the board at all? Cause you have great support as well as some engineering's responses to any of Graves's. Points that he brought up.
I have a question through the. So is there for the existing structures? Are there septic tanks in there now and other existing wells? I see. I see the one existing well looks like on the west side of that.
Yeah, that's the only existing well.
That's the only. Septic?
That is septic.
The septic. There are, there are, there are. There are two cesspools which will be abandoned and filled in. So they will be removed and the new septic system in the back left corner will replace, that would be the only septic on the lot.
So cesspool. Yes.
Thank you.
I just want to ask one question. I know you had. Did the handicap parking spot was being. Put in the back of the building now. Everything indicate which part that will be, or you will have it marked with a handicap sign. Want to make sure that I can handicap.
Yeah. This should, this should be on the, on the site plan. There should be a sign and a handicap mark on the, I think it's sheet four.
New thing is on here, yeah.
Yes.
Move the chair.
Go right ahead, John.
So the applicant said that they were considering tying into the reconstruction of Route twenty with the drainage for their lot. Did I hear that correct?
Uh, we are tying into existing, an existing drain line that's in Gilmere, Glen Glenmere that discharges adjacent to. Route twenty. But eventually the, when Mass Highway comes, they will tie in. They will redo that drainage in the street when they reconstruct the Route twenty in front of the site.
Are you going to, I suppose this project will be built well, well before that though.
Correct. Yep. So we have taken in account the drainage. So what, so in my drainage analysis, whatever gets to that. That drop inlet, I cannot increase any, any flow to that drop inlet. So that's why we have two underground basins that are under the pavement that hold the water back. And let's, it lets the water out a little bit at a time. So we don't increase any runoff towards. The existing drainage in Glenmere. So there will be no increase in flow because we have those underground basins. On our site.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gina, don't you have any questions?
Yeah.
Where's the power coming from?
From, there's an existing.
Yes, please.
There's an existing utility pole on Glenmere, which we will bring that across Glenmere and then go underground. Put a pole on our property and then go underground to a transformer pad next to the structure in the back right corner of the building. So if you look at the utility plan or the site plan, it should be shown in the back, back right corner of the building.
Yeah, I see the pad. Yep.
And the utility plan would show you the location of the proposed utility pole. And then the underground line from that utility pole to the transformer pad.
Through the chair?
Right ahead, John.
What, what's going to be the lighting on this project? Typically, these, these car lots are pretty bright all the time. It's kind of, you're right at the. Top of a residential neighborhood. Have you considered that at all?
Um, yes, we have. So one, the site is lower is, if you look at the grades now, you can, you can see the slope in the back of the property. So the site is down in the way the lighting was. We have a lighting plan. The lighting plan is sheet eight. And if anyone looks at that lighting plan, there is no glare. We had a lighting engineer do no glare past our property line. So the glare would be just on our property. And they, and then the glare off the property would, would be zero. So they've done that with deflectors on the lights as well as, you know. Other, other, other ways to deflect light down and not out towards the back or towards off the property.
But yes, all of your votes all the way through building and freestanding lights when we pull cut off pictures pointing down. You came right on the property. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yes. There'll be no glare off the prop, at the property line. It'll be zero. And that's why we also added more evergreens along the back in the side of Glenmere.
Sure, ahead, yeah. So there's a proposed retaining wall. I see it on the twenty side. Is that continuing? It wraps all the way around to the Glenmere. That's one continuous retaining wall.
The retaining wall is only along, along the left property line. The back will be graded at a two to one or three to one slope from the back of the property line up. From the back of the curb up to the property line.
And then I, I thought I saw a retaining wall to the front on the Worcester roadside as well.
Same, yes, that is correct. There will be retaining wall along the front because we had to raise the grade because of the underground basins. We have to have that two foot separation to groundwater. So because of that, we had to raise that grade in the front of the site.
And then that goes, that's the curved line that goes all the way up, right? It keeps going.
That is correct. Yes. Yep.
And then that looks like there's guard rail on top of that or some kind of fence on top of that?
Yes, there's a guard rail along the top. Yes.
How many display spots do you have, because?
A hundred and sixty-four, I think. That's what I came up with. If you look at the site plan, they have numbers in squares. Those would, if you add those up, I think I did the, I did the addition. I think it's a hundred and sixty-four.
The spaces surrounding your building, the customer parking.
That is correct. Yep. Customer employee parking. Yep.
With the chair?
Go right ahead, John.
So it, when you're, you're moving vehicles in and out of the, the lot on, say, a vehicle carrier. I would, I'd imagine you, you'd come in either off of Route twenty or off of Glenmere into the rear of the property. You're, you're not anticipating using Glenmere office, you know, coming off of Stafford Street and coming down that way to, to bring vehicles into your lot.
No, I, I was planning on coming up Route twenty, going into Glenmere and then parking in the back, like you said. And then it would leave, it could either leave out the entrance to the left or it could leave back out to Glenmere and then take a, a right. And there is a truck turning plan on the last sheet. I think it's sheet eleven. That shows that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is one more sheet.
And you're anticipating, no, you're not going to be able to. When Route twenty is reconstructed, there'd be no going eastbound from your, your site. It'd be westbound only going up to take a U-turn further up on Route twenty.
That is correct. Yes. Yeah.
You got a question, Doug?
No.
Randy, what were you gonna say before John asked this question?
Well, the, the previous plan, you had shown a. Space for the. A lift for a car that that was, I guess, it was shown as being in the handicap spot. You still have any space for that lift?
Yeah, the handicap spot is still, I mean, the handicaps, that's the reason why the handicap spot was moved to the back. So the, the lift is still in the front of the building and that was the reasoning why they, we moved the handicap spot to the back of the building. So there was no conflict. For access for a handicap person.
Anyone else from the board have a question? Matt, I open it up to the public. All right, it does sound like the open the questions and comments on this project to the public. If you please, if you have a question, can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm Karen Marchelli.
Yeah, correct.
Six Glenmere, which is directly across from your property. And I do have several questions. Number one, I'd like to fence put up. I know that when you first talked about this, you said that there would be a fence around the property. Like the one that she did for rent for rent. As opposed to a chain link fence, but that type of fence.
Okay.
But I'm just. Yeah. Discussing more of the proposal evergreen.
That I was much rather have a fence. You want to put some evergreens up there too, but and no deciduous trees, but a fence. To cover most of it. Where's the main entrance going to be? Okay, and is there a driveway on Glenmere?
Yes.
And exactly where is that?
That would be a secondary exit or a secondary.
And where do you have the relation to my house? And where is?
It's across from the garage.
Does it interfere with her driveway?
Doesn't.
It doesn't?
Next door. And the building is going to be where? I can see that, but in relationship.
Behind the building that is existing now. It's like tiny behind it.
So if, if I'm standing in my driveway, can I see the building straight on?
It'll be off to your left now. It'll be at like a.
At Charles.
Could be at like what kind of block?
And where will test grids go?
Who's one?
Okay, and what are your hours of operation?
Nine to six Monday to Friday, nine to three on Saturday.
Okay, and do you plan using?
No.
No.
Um, and deliveries will go where?
They'll run to the, to the east side of the building. Right around here, a loan cars there. When they're care, when they're terriered in, hopefully they're driven in or we go there.
And you're talking about a retaining wall, how high is that?
No, the retaining wall is, is roughly three feet high at the, at the, at um, at the intersection of Glenmere and Route twenty.
Um, okay, that's, that's basically all I have, but my main sticking point was I would like a fence.
I know, just so the board can consider. When, when you're talking about a fence, just the section heading up Glenmere towards um Oxbow Road. That section where the parking is, because they can see where your house is.
Probably where you guys get the bushes.
At what, at what section though?
Lift on the top section?
Top section of Glenmere. Meaning that's, yeah, right there.
Well, where, so this is my house right here.
Correct.
Yeah, I'd like, you know, around here, so that I'm not looking at cars.
Now, is that your house, your garage?
It's my house.
The box, the box.
I didn't make that drawing, so I'm guessing that's my house.
Peter, could you?
That, that, no, that small box is the garage. It's the small garage that's out there. Alright, that little box. Her, her, her house is further up the street.
Alright. Well, I think if you look at the front page of my, my
Gotcha. Alright, thank you. Thank you very much.
It looks like your house is behind that, that property.
Peter, is the grade coming up on that section of the site or only up front?
This is your house?
Only up front. The grade over there is going down.
Okay, gotcha. Alright, thank you.
And, and, and her, and her garage is right there. You know what I mean? That little box is the garage.
Thank you.
Trees along that here. It's our evergreen, evergreen bushes along the back. It'd be something up this side, so you don't get that view in there. It would be difficult to get something along this side.
Okay, then how about a fence like a rent here?
Is that his property?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's the property line. So it's really only this portion right there that is close to you. Over here is going to be a detention base.
A fence here would block your view from this. This is, is this another garage area over here or?
It's whatever property you cross the street.
Okay, because my house, my house is not across from where the other garage is.
I mean, there is a commercial building at the, on the opposite corner. So there's a commercial, commercial building at, right across the street on the corner, then the garage and then her house.
What's the, what's the property? There's directions behind the car dealership property.
Another commercial warehouse.
It's a warehouse.
Commercial building.
Yep, and it's another, it's literally like right behind them. Yeah, commercial building right there, then behind that is a residence.
Okay. And that's, what's this back here?
We should, so we're directly the property is a commercial building. The engineer just stayed big behind.
Yeah, yeah, just trying to get an idea of where her house is.
Yeah, okay, there's the property, but I don't know where. How the property of the house sits.
Yeah. So.
I have your full side to this easy with that.
I'm, I'm looking at it and it does look like your house is across from where the garage would be, maybe a little bit closer to Route twenty, but.
When you say garage.
I'm sorry, you're, you're the, the Yeah, so it looks like this is correct. So I'm, I'm the warehouse, the building for Abbott. I'm looking at, yeah.
I can show you kind of a picture. It's like, if you're in my driveway right here, this is the view that I have.
Yeah, okay.
And that's, that's why I'd like to get a fence.
So this is, this is trying to get, this is your house here. Yeah, this is, so this is Route twenty down here.
Okay.
Okay, so this, that, this property line would go right there. So that building's across the street. So something there. Can I see a picture again? Just, that's a Google.
I just
I'm just trying to say what would be best, what would be best to help you? Because it, it sounds like something like right there. Would to be right across there, blocking that corner there. I, I'm not sure where the driveway is. Problem is, there's a, there is a secondary driveway here that could not be a fence, but definitely something here. We think that that would work out quite a bit for you to enough you want to say, let's still get something passed here, but at least block part of your, your line of sight. Yeah, no.
Gary, would you be open to putting up all six foot white stockade fence just on that one section?
I'd rather just stick with abreviate. He's, they're much easier to look at.
I would rather look at a fence.
Yeah, just tons of landscaping there for that purpose.
Just no leaf bearing trees, please. Yeah, they're all gone.
Well, okay.
The leaves are still all there. They're still all blowing over, but I would, I would prefer a fence.
There's a lot less leaves rolling over now.
It looks like you're proposing maples for, on the corner there.
We're just kind of up in the air about what, you know, what deciduous trees are gonna go on the dog boards. You know, flowering trees for springtime appeal, you know, it's, it would only be a handful of them. Most of them are evergreens and these are four letter ones for us.
I saw as the board wanna George prefer to fence or have the applicant stick up the trees, because it's either one or the other.
Um. I'm just looking at, you know, right along this, this side here.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, just that most, was it the northerly piece on, section on
That runs parallel.
And I don't know how many feet that is. Here, would you have to have a ballpark estimate? How many, what the footage is on that?
So is it from the, is it, is it from the entrance to the property corner?
About twenty feet, fifteen, eighteen?
I would say probably twenty-five, yeah, twenty to twenty-five feet of fence. Just in that one corner?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, I mean, it's up to Gary's, you know, it's up, well, it's really up to the board. So if you, you tell us to do it, then we have to do it.
I'm getting a feel of the board here.
It, I mean, obviously not chain link, but some type of start. White or natural or do you have
through the
Go right ahead, Bill.
Is there a, a fence between the Marcelle property and the Curtis Abbott property now? Or what's the
My fence is there, my own personal fence. At the time that Abbott went in, the board wasn't doing anything.
What type of fence is that?
Um, it's a stockade fence. But I, I'd prefer to see one of those white plastic-y ones, I don't know if they're made of vinyl.
You'd rather be a vinyl thing?
Yes, I think it would last longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, how, how high or what?
Eight feet.
Is, is eight feet?
Standard? Standard fence is six feet.
Yeah.
You know, it's typical panels, the, the closer six foot fences.
Eight is the max though, right?
So an eight foot fence would require a building permit and engineering to support the structure.
Six foot would not.
Six foot fence does not require a building permit. Not require engineering to support the structure. Creative way to get a higher fence than it had been in the past is what got done at rain for rent where they built up a berm which, you know, helped with the green space along the roadway and, and gave them a better parking area inside and give a taller obstruction and didn't have to deal with all those other issues.
Can you do that?
And on, on what side? So just to the, the northmost corner of that property?
Yeah, on Glen, on Glenmere area, yeah.
The driveway to the corner.
And that would be the least uh blocking of the site on that side. It, it looks to me like there's a lot of landscape work that's gone into this plan. Certainly improvement on the Route twenty side. I mean, how, I think the existing landscaping will, will grow there.
Oh, very, everybody's twins.
And those are everybody right, right, shown in the plan, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
So is this fence gonna be freestanding or is it gonna make a return on the back end of the property? Is it gonna run up Glenmere and then take a left on the back end of the property or is it just gonna be one straight freestanding piece of fence?
I think it'd be one straight standing piece. Because behind, behind the property now is just another industrial warehouse for storage for Curtis Abbott.
That's fenced in.
Is the tree gonna stay there? It's, this is not in lieu of the tree. This is additional, additional of the two trees that are there proposed on the plant.
I take it as in lieu of the trees, because the trees were there to provide buffering to the neighborhood. It's a trade-off. What do you think?
I think the trees should stay. It's just two trees and just have that stupid piece of fence sitting there. It's gotta look kind of dumb, I would think.
Yeah, well, I think we're, we're in a hard place of a, we're trying to accommodate a neighbor and they're saying they don't want trees. And then uh they want a fence.
Well, you, you know, like, I realize at this point that we're waiting for a re-review of graves.
Exactly, yes.
Before any final decision.
Yeah, correct.
So maybe some renderings or some Photoshop.
The difference between the trees and the fence.
So that you have a visualization of it. I mean, I think, I can understand that the neighbors saying about fence. I personally keep like fences, but that's my opinion. You know, I can go with a tan, but I'm not.
Yeah.
I don't know if gray is available. I'm not a fence salesman. But I also know that
Isn't even as tall as the abreviate, so I don't even understand. Like, it's gonna block less if you do a fence.
But the deer are gonna come and eat your abreviate, so you're gonna have spaces there. You're gonna have to vote. That's fine, but I, I would like to have a fence.
I also think there's a part in your site plan review or your site plan requirements that say that there'd be a certain number of deciduous trees of a certain caliber planted on inside.
Correct.
So you have, you know.
You gotta meet that threshold.
Yeah. In the corner, would I assume that if the fence went in there, you may not plant that one in the northeast corner.
Probably not, no. You know, put up a fence and block it by a tree and try to just overkill on a big barrier for, originally works up and out, but it's
Alright, well. Alright, so, um, I mean, what do you want to do? Uh, like I said, I don't think that's an unreasonable request to have, but that's it. Uh, personally, I would rather see trees than abreviate. Okay. It's a request from neighbor who's directly across the street, who has a direct view, wanted that piece of property.
Yep.
And if that makes them happy, I think it's a small price to keep the peace.
Yep.
That's my opinion, but others may have other opinions.
If we have time, because it's, I'm still waiting for other issues here.
Yeah.
You know.
Engineer could do a real quick thing with the tree fence.
I think that we should get something from the applicants, you know, the ease to make the chain link, you know, with a fence and that.
We, for me, for the board makes a decision. We could possibly try the trees and if you're not happy, do the fence after or something like that. If it's not to your theme, if, if there's still a, a safe problem, but. I mean, I, I think the I'm just guessing the intent is for visual blockage of that property and that, that's what kind of agrees the abreviate is will have better visual blocking than a fence would. So it's providing visual blocking.
How long is it gonna take the abreviate to grow?
Two years.
Well, I mean, that's, that, I mean, you buy them at ten feet tall, eight feet tall. I mean, they don't come like that and just hurry up and wait. They, they come fully grown. It would be a quick barrier.
And they're gonna be taken care of? They're gonna be watered?
We definitely get taken care of. It would all be irrigated with water. Just no wokes, please. No, 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 true. Pick up leaves every, every month of the year. It's the way the wind blows, you know.
Alright, well, we think about that and then, and we come up with a decision. Uh, there's a couple other questions. I didn't hear answers soon. So right now, you're sharing a driveway with the, the property next door, it looks like, or part of your driveway extends across from the property next to you?
Off of twenty, off of twenty.
Yes, you have an easement on that property to, to use that?
That's how it is now and that's how it's been existing. That's how our plan.
And that's how, that's how Mass Highway has it too, in the, in re, in the re, the uh, design. So we're, we're just working with Mass Highway and that's what they gave us for a curb cut in that location, because like what Gary said, that's what it's existing now. And that's what Mass Highway is proposing.
Go right ahead, Curtis.
So regardless of what Mass Highway is doing and regardless of what's happening now, without a deed and easement, the neighbor could fence that line and screw this whole thing up. So I would strongly suggest that the board inquire the applicant to provide deed and easement, right, to pass a repass over that land. Because the owner of that land could change sometime in the future. The gentleman's agreement that's been going on for years could quickly disappear.
But they would have to get permission through Mass Highway to do that, because they, they have the final say on a curb cut.
No, they wouldn't have to get Mass Highway's permission to do anything on their property. They would only have to have permission if it was on Mass Highway's property.
They could come in and
Yeah, the, the parking on the property is, is the, the whole lot tarred or is it impervious?
The whole lot will be tarred.
The whole lot will be tarred. So a percentage that needs to remain open?
Yes, it's twenty-five percent of the um property must be unoccupied, a building and pavements. And I know Mr. And they ma- and I both made comments to that effect, and I believe in the engineers' response that information has provided.
So we are at twenty-nine percent of unoccupied area.
Okay, twenty-nine percent, Peter, right? Okay, twenty nine percent, Peter, right?
It should be on the cover sheet.
Okay. Through the chair.
Go right ahead, Bill.
Do you have any design on the building yet? Has that been decided?
Uh, yeah, basic design, I think.
Got the board.
Did we have elevation? I don't see what was sent out either.
I do have smart technical plans.
I think Randy has large sized plans.
I didn't have a smaller size.
Overall, I think it's gonna be improvement to the look of the site.
Yeah. Let me touch you.
If anybody in the public can apologize, this copy that we have. Wonder how you mix power.
We can use a crane, just leave it there.
It it, yeah, there's doors and this is paved right up to the building, so you can kind of drive through the building.
Yeah, there'll be like three full doors on each end of the building.
Did you have elevation?
Did you get paid with your?
Anybody in the public?
Still four.
This is the fourth thing. They do have some elevation.
Is that further?
So it's a two story?
Uh, yes, just the back half.
Thirty five.
Second. Like the main the main front entrance and four and two story side and the back half of the building is gonna have a a conference room upstairs and an office. I think there should be a second floor layout as well.
Any signage on the building?
Uh, we're allowed to, Will. I'm not sure if you're allowed to, but I saw I can see the S D O, so you might you might be able to. I don't think at least put the. The street number on there.
Signage up to a certain size or a certain percentage of the front of the area that the sign is attached.
Open signage. Thinking you'd like to have signage.
I would like to have signage on that.
I'm placing the bylaws. You say no signage and then you go.
Yeah.
Put it on, you get it from back.
I thought that was the part of the building permit. Yeah, so yeah, we'd like to have signage on that.
Yeah, on the front and the top.
In the round part?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can probably add that.
Why you? We're leaving right in here. I'd like to just a small ass enter here, enter here. Oh.
They haven't shown a sign on.
They do.
Show sign.
Page four.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, and don't worry about those. Exempt sign.
Are you the questions from the board at this point in time? I'm always throwing for response from Mike Andrew on Peter's responses, just to double check.
Yeah, there's been a lot.
Everything was met.
A lot of progress already.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Go right ahead.
So I already expressed my concern again about the using of the neighboring property as part of the driveway. I did hear just tonight that the entrance, the accessible entrance was gonna be to the rear. Um, I think that's, and I I have to research it, but if this is a public building, all entrances need to be accessible. And relegating a public and of the accessible entrance to the rear unless that is the main entrance of the building. I think that runs afoul of the architectural access for this.
So who, if you don't mind repeating that again, as far as the entrance off, the entrance off of Glenn Mia, right?
No.
Yeah. I'm talking about accessibility. Accessibility. Gotcha. All right.
You guys are discussing the site. The site has.
Yes.
It's that it's gonna have to have required accessible park rises. And required accessible route to the building and into the building.
Yep.
Okay. Accessible, if the if the if it is a public building, which this is, customers are invited.
Yeah.
Okay. Any entrance that the customer would come in has to be accessible. Relegate the accessible spot to the rear of the building.
Why not?
Because it's a public building.
Take this building.
This is a very existing building.
Okay.
We're young.
Yeah. So if I build a new school.
Okay.
And or a grocery store.
All entrances?
All public entrances have to be accessible.
Okay.
So.
But if something is designated employee entrance.
Employee only.
Only, yes.
Doesn't have to be accessible.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
But but if they're gonna have a public entrance on the Route twenty side.
And this side.
And the rear of the building.
They both have to be.
They both have to be accessible.
Okay. But you can still have your parking for handicap parking in the back of your building.
And there's a maximum distance of the roof. To the accessible entrance.
Well, okay, you've got your doorway here and your parking spot right here.
Yeah, so what you're saying is they would need a handicap spot on the front and the back. If both of those.
Public entrances. They're not public. If the front is a public, there's certain chance. So they need to.
I mean, the only reason why I moved the handicap spot to the back was because of that scissor. I don't know what that lift is. So I mean, if Gary didn't have that lift there, then I could keep the handicap spot in the front.
Yeah, we can we can fix that pretty easily. He thought we're gonna be like swapping out the car that was up there all the time, but we're just gonna leave one car up there permanently.
You can get rid of that scissor then, and then I can move the handicap spot in the front and then both. Cause grade wise, I can make both entrances acts accessible for handicap. It's just, I didn't know what that scissor, what it was, so I just moved it to the back, but that's it. I can take care of that.
I believe Kurt saying there will be you need one handicap in the front and one in the back. Because you have two public entrances to the building.
I don't know. I have it has not been defined to me yet where where public and private entrances are. I'm saying that if they have a public entrance on both sides of the building.
You gotta meet.
Both entrances have to be accessible.
I'm sure there's something.
Correct. Yeah.
I don't wanna get to, oh, here's the building plan.
Yeah, then here we go.
And. Here we go. There what there is a ratio of the number of accessible spaces to the number of spaces for the property. You know, we're talking about a hundred and sixty four spaces. Well, those are not all customer parking. But the the plan I saw when I made these comments did not designate the number of customer parking places via. Versus other parking places, so that ratio has to be retained.
I can I can comment on that. I can comment on that. But so the site plan, the latest site plan shows all the spaces that designated as display spaces with dimensions. And then I can, I can, I didn't on this plan, but I can designate employee or customer parking. I can do that, but this hundred and sixty four spaces are designated as display parking spaces, not actual parking spaces.
Just one of those things, Peter, that, you know, when you put the the ratio of open space, it's something to be on the cover page that we look at these numbers and don't have to do math.
Okay.
Verify that.
Okay.
And I did make the board aware when I made these comments that I had sent a letter to Mr. Uh, I could.
And Maradi.
And Maradi about the site work activity that had started and it appears that he ceased the work, but I did not get any written replies to his intentions.
That we was dying since.
Should send me a letter that said we haven't done anything.
I think Kurt references to. Site, the car dealership, just remember, because this is changing and I believe the car dealership license was done through the board, so I can do that. Go back to the board selectmen for a modification of the original.
That that is in in the letter that I sent and Gary's well aware that he needs a modify modification. And that selectmen are gonna work hand in hand as to what approval the planning board gave. You know, the site has.
Ask how many cars are on the approved plan. That's at least what it did the first time. It was a license for. Who was on the approved plan.
Right.
We're not going in front of them, yeah, them.
Car, if if, you know, if you if you only for some reason in the site plan allowed a hundred and fifty spaces, then the selectman would only give them a license for a hundred and fifty cars. So once the site plan activity is approved, memorialized, then it's next number of cars, then he can take that information with the board selectman and ask, have the hearing for modification license.
Plus the four inside.
Those don't count. Well. Nope, wrong bylaw. Yeah, they those would count. Yeah. So you're licensed, but they don't count towards unregistered motor vehicles parked on a road. Wrong bylaw, sorry.
So you think the maximum number of cars that you would put in the building.
Yeah. Yeah.
With that account, yeah.
Alright, we have a. Motion to continue the public hearing since we got there. Uh, so we have our graves and then uh Peter could do a visual of the fence and the trees.
Looking. Okay, I can do that.
From a. This is my southeast property.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for the Gary Jackson Motors site plan. We'll say.
All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Hi. What date? Did we have a date?
We've got it. When's the next?
Hi.
May from May fourth.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Gary.
Next back. Peaceful Woods, the subdivision, senior learning, special permanent annual extension request off the center depot road.
Peaceful Woods subdivision, I don't think we called the board last year. Um, when they granted the extension was to have Mike Andrew's review. The plan would need to comply with current stormwater regulations. At the time that was done, it might did determine that it will have to. The plan will have to be modified to comply with current stormwater regulations. Um, that was not provided to us, because I think there was some questions on the property's gonna be sold or not. But regardless, since they move forward with the actual construction of the project, they would have to comply with the current stormwater regulations. Get building permits for any construction on that property. Then Mike and Gray would have to review and approve.
So. Okay. I'm just wondering, do we do we approve a subdivision that we know is gonna come back in front of us again? Or do we just say it's it's defunct and bring it to play together?
The the subdivision itself, the proposal itself, combined with the bylaws.
Good.
The zoning bylaws, the stormwater regulations, they have changed.
Okay.
From when this was originally approved, that they will have to comply with the current stormwater regulations.
Is that gonna require site work? And therefore a site plan like?
Well, I mean, yeah, I'm sure it's probably gonna be some modifications to play with us, you know, at the level of field change or or wrong site plan application. So until that's determined, we wouldn't know which direction to go, but they would have to do that before we could.
They have.
Humor notes for season issue building permits.
Right. Yeah, so they're gonna have to get that designed and reviewed and made.
So this is just another one year, two year extension, one year extension?
Yes. We can approve the extension and then they have to, it's obligatory, they have to go to conservation anyway and comply with that, so.
Before the building.
Yeah, we're under the assumption that, yes, this modification is gonna be made prior to construction.
Yeah.
This is more of just extend it.
Yeah.
Keep it alive, you know, as we spare funding, everything like that. You know, study the the building climate as it is right now, maybe.
So is 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 there a new plan in the works or is it a build of the build out of the current plan?
I as of right now, it's the current one.
It's the current plan.
Yeah, a new frame work. They'll be starting over right here at the board, so if they change from what was originally approved.
Through the chair, I would recommend we just approve it, that at least leaves them the flexibility to. You know, know that one thing is for certain, they can move forward with this, you know, and then. Apartments that are acquired. Make a motion. Make a motion to.
Just for the date reference, it's actually today, four twenty, two thousand twenty three, or the extension we approved to.
For twenty twenty three. I'll make a motion to approve the permit for an annual extension until April twentieth, twenty twenty three for the peaceful woods subdivision.
Second.
All those in favor? Like.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm staying.
Haven't filled. I might need it.
Thank you, guys.
Totally.
All right, up next, we got. Extension request off of Hayman Hill Road.
Um, Mr. Reed has not replied to me about coming, I believe they gave the board be until March second, I believe. For completing the work that he's done, he's confident at the time. Uh, from my understanding, the lights within the subdivision are up and working. Yet issue with that should be they want him to provide some sort of schematic where the pipes are on the ground. I don't know if that's been done yet. And there is no light installed on Hayman Hill Road as of now.
That's the way to the corner.
Right.
A street light.
Yeah.
And the one other major item I knew. Knew we hadn't complete was enough the detention bases to the satisfaction of the highway department, which I can confirm that's been done. Or if it's done a while ago, it might be done again, now that it's been two or three, another year. I know it getting to a point, though, I have to say, you know, because we've had a lot of, you know, the property owners over there, they're, you know, express their dissatisfaction. Why is this taking so long when all the houses have been completed and sold? Now, they, you know, they are incurring piling expenses every year and everything, so. They, you know, they are incurring plowing expenses every year and everything, so. I don't know how the board's opinion on how long we let this go. You know, how much longer we let this go, I should say, that. Board would have to decide that, you know, give to a certain deadline. It's not done, then we're all the public caring on pulling the bond with the whole public caring for that. Really don't want to do this, you know, a lot of work on the towns behalf. But on the same note, this has been going on a long time. Oh, the one other major issue, which I don't know, it's been addressed yet is has he replanted the trees? Had the tree were to go over there, I believe it was last fall, we lost all the leaves. Be determined, you know, what trees need to be replanted then. So the two things that we'll be looking, we'd be looking at, or three things is the lighting, it's complete. Detention bases are cleaned out and replacement of any dead or dying trees. Those are the three main issues that we're left.
So did, do you know if the any issues between the developer and the. Heritage Preservation Trust have been?
I I was just about to say that. Last I know. He has not done that yet. Preservation Trust.
So. Further, as a staff member in a in its town that that feels some calls from these neighborhoods that have been uncompleted. And as Mr. Benson's pointed out, these people are incurring costs of plowing because the town does not plow that. I I from what I understand of the history of this, this has been, you know, going on for quite a while. And I mean, the the developer has made promises to complete and not come through. I think that this board, my suggestion to this board would be is to hold a public hearing. And break the bond because we're gonna have, you know, either he's gonna have to get it done by fall. Okay, maybe, or the town is gonna have to break the bond. Through procurement work and all that stuff, to be able to get this completed before the next winter season comes. Because these citizens are being negatively affected by his lack of performance.
And that's one of the to add on to that, waiting till the fall to give him a chance to finish your work. Isn't a good idea because there's a process to go for road acceptance by the town. That has to be submitted to the selectman's office, you know, paperwork has to be done. And if there's any chance of getting on the fall town meeting, it needs to be completely well in advance.
We gave him to the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so.
Is there any other remedy besides like just a bond? I mean, can we find him per month?
No, he's paying money on that.
Yeah, well, the the thing is, in this particular case, it's a cash bond that the banks holding the money. So it's the the money is accessible, sometimes a security bond, it's a lot bigger problem. In this particular case, it's actually cash, so money is available. It should, you know, we choose to go that route.
But there's no other remedy, there's no fine in the bylaws.
Not when it's uncompleted.
What's the bond, what's the bond about and how much work is left to be done?
Complete the basins, the light at the end of Hammond Hill Road and high road and then the trees. Then the as built planned by an engineer.
So let's get, um, my opinion, let's get new numbers from Graves.
Was like a little over a hundred thousand dollars or something in the neighborhood.
Yeah. But.
Public hearing for June. John, you got a problem? You good with that?
Through the chair, I just, I think the light at the end of the street is. Gonna be a problem for us or for him, because that's a national grid issue.
But I have to say is Saint Mary's Way, which is down the street where they work now, more acceptance. He's he's been able to work with National Grid and set it all up with the lighting. They were just waiting to see what kind of light he wanted me to put in. So. They are accessible, maybe Mr. Reardon isn't going the proper route, I don't know. But the owner of the subdivision on Saint Mary's Way was able to work with National Grid. And, you know, was in the process of getting a light installer, if it isn't done already. And that's like in a six month period, not years. So it can be done, you know, I don't, I don't know how much effort he's put into, you know. Contacting National Grid and getting it done, so.
Give him to town meeting.
Good idea, thought that Randy, on Mr. Benson's, sorry, formal meeting. Is this. Shorty money in the town's hand or is it in the bank's hand?
It's in the bank's hand.
So I additionally then I would suggest that maybe calls be made to the. The president of Cornerstone Bank and say, hey, you know, here here's the history. Yeah, we're we're getting, we are planning on holding this hearing on such and such a date. And it is going to affect money under your care.
Get to make them aware.
Want to make them aware and to see if they would. Yeah, kind of quick, give a little nudge, say, hey, you gotta get moving.
Trying to get this done. I mean, the African can get this done for, well, you know, we have to follow prevailing wages. And, you know, all the guidelines we have to follow, you could hire anybody to do the work. And you actually have a savings if you did it yourself, but. We've been waiting a long time and I agree to the residents on that road.
Why don't they pay for their own pay or own funds?
It was, it was part of their. Because they put it in the homeowners agreement to the property owners. And unfortunately for the property owners, whoever was giving them guidance, they didn't read all the fine print. You know, their attorneys or whoever, the property owners, I think I normally get stuck with this.
Somebody was smart.
More than understand, you know, they're unsatisfied and it's expensive. I mean, pretty decent amount of road, so.
Up to deadline.
Go ahead, John.
So I think the the issue with the plowing to jeans, it was now that he's completed all the streets, the streets are fine. I I believe and passed. The pond does not have anything to do with the streets. This, the big thing that Jerry has a issue with is the light at the end of the street. That's the number one concern for him to be able to to release that, to get up there to go plowing. The other issues are not the the as built for the the electrical. That's that's a, that's a cost to him to come out of his pocket. That's probably why he's dragging his feet on that. And the the pond work, that's also a cost coming out of his pocket to do that work. So to Don's point, to get this done before the snow flies, that light has to be on there. So Jerry would go up that street and plow it. But those other issues, it's it's just a ma- matter of financial wherewithal to do it. So I think we've given them plenty of time to 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 come up with a. A plan to do it, I mean, it's been two years now that he's kind of let it slide and he's done a little bit, he's done a little bit, he's done a little bit. But it it's way past the the time to give him another chance.
John, it's probably been closer to five.
Yeah. I mean, we've been more than patient with them. I mean, I think we've been, we've been all frustrated with it too. But to to let it go another year in another cycle through the winter that they have to pay for plowing. That's that's crazy.
All right, so.
We need a motion or just make a plan? Make a motion for a public hearing date.
I'm going to say first meeting in June. Cause when when's the, was it in May, May?
May sixteen.
Okay, so first meeting in June.
Work not be completed with the public hearing for.
And I guess in the meantime, a letter should be sent to President of Cornerstone Bank. Making them aware of what the the board has decided to do, since nothing has been done. And Tommy is is about to come and go.
So I will make sure we send it certified, registered mail to Mr. Reardon, so that we have a record that he didn't receive notice.
First meeting.
Through the chair.
Yep, well, John.
Yeah, it's not that nothing has been done, he has been doing some small stuff. He got it paved and he's got the trees planted and I I don't know, are the bounds in? Did he put all the bounds in yet?
Well, that's part of the problem now for the conservation area.
Oh, the heritage trust stuff, John, is the highway bonds.
Yeah.
It's the, for this Charlton Heritage Trust group.
So I would, I would just choose the words wisely to the letter, saying that the the progress is not acceptable. To what the board had required or something to that effect.
Unsatisfactory or.
They're giving it all the houses are sold.
Yeah, they probably sold over already.
A lot of them got their in-ground pools in. I think that might be in the homeowners too, it's like most. Good for them.
Are we good on this item? All right, next up, continue public hearing for the zoning bylaw, amending the use table and the definition within the current zoning bylaw.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I don't think you took a bow about that motion.
Was there a motion?
My question was, do we actually need a motion for that?
I think, I think that maybe just. Cover bases, make a motion to hold a public hearing. Hold a public hearing.
Or make a motion to hold the public hearing for the Hammond Woods subdivision. Extension request to be held on June one. For the purpose of a public hearing to discuss the bond taken by the town. One second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I, Jean Amos, thank you, Kurt. All right, next up, the continued public hearing. Gabe, how you doing?
Hi, I'm doing well. So do just want to get back into it, looking at the at section three of the use and intensity regulations.
Yeah, I did share with the board. You added in sort of the amended some definitions that added in the ones that you sent me after the last meeting.
Right.
Right now, all we really have left to discuss is the new tables and.
Yeah. All right, I will, I will screen share and, yeah, let me, let me know if it's a legible for you guys. Does that look good?
Yeah, listen up.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, before before we get into the table. We we did discuss the the definition and Gabe put it in the bylaw of an open unoccupied space. You got that wording correctly. I'm just wondering if we could maybe somehow title that yard. Open unoccupied space so that it would be grouped together.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that would work.
Just like to put all the buildings.
Yeah. Easy change.
And it last, last time we met, I asked that recreational vehicle. Or, yeah, recreational vehicle. It's on.
It's page nine.
I have page numbers on my, I'm not talking about definitions, I'm sorry. I jumped into the table, I'm sorry.
I appreciate it.
So I asked that recreational vehicles be added to that list, which is no across the board. An unintended consequence came to my mind about that. A literal interpretation of that would say that recreational vehicles are not allowed in the town shop.
Right.
Okay, so the the intent or the ask was is that recreational vehicles not be used. As dwelling units.
Yeah.
So either.
Should we, should we make that permanent dwelling units?
What's temporary?
Right.
Yeah, people are actually trying to say they're temporary and but they're being used permanently. It's actually been an issue here in town with a couple of properties, so I think we need.
Should we say a month, a week?
Well, I can, I can tell you right now that recreational vehicles can be used on an occupied dwellings property. For thirty days when someone's visiting. So your your parents live in Florida and they come up and they park in your yard for thirty days and you're. As they dwelling and that's that's acceptable. Okay, the problem has been is is them being used solely as a dwelling unit on a vacant parcel. So I think what we have to do is is say that recreational vehicles will not be used as permanent dwelling units.
Well, those are residence cards, residential uses, dwelling uses.
You guys see what I screwed up?
In in a way, it just, it's it's not clear. Yeah, I don't think it's screwed up, but it's not clear for habitation. Residential uses. For more than temporary habitation, that's a what's.
Can we kind of break this in half a little bit? And we have mobile home, mobile home parks, I mean, they're permanent dwellings. But then recreational vehicles. Or recreational vehicles.
Can, can we put some subtext in there?
I think you might, so my best answer so far is is to add a new line.
Yeah, I would, I'm gonna, I'm putting a new line in section two in residential uses.
Say recreational vehicles.
For permanent habitation, for.
Used as dwelling units on unoccupied lots, good or unimproved lots.
Yeah, that's where the. Rowage would currently end.
And and that includes a tiny house that's registered, towable.
That would be a mobile home, I think.
But they don't, without power or they don't have an engine.
So the rub with tiny houses is is how do they, how do they meet the Board of Health regulations for water supply? And sewage disposal. That's that's gets them out of my, my ballpark is as soon as you get permission to use a tiny house. That has no permanent septic system and has no permanent water supply as a domicile.
What if you looked at how this modified this, but wouldn't he's add this letter I. Wouldn't this. A tiny house fall into this category?
Recreational vehicles, that sounds like that definition. And it's registerable, right, you can register them.
Yeah, I mean, my understanding, the way you're talking about the tiny homes, if you, if the concern is ones that can be picked up and moved. I mean, that would, that would fall under either recreational vehicles, if they operate under their own power. Or mobile homes, if they don't operate under their own power. And you already have mobile homes banned in the current, you know, in in the current version we're looking at and in the existing bylaws. So I think, I mean, if that's the concern, and then on top of that, if there are health and safety concerns, I mean, that's. You know, that that would apply for any like manufactured housing. You know, that, that would apply for any like manufactured housing.
Yeah, I think, I think trying to deal with, with tiny houses is like.
I mean, they, they, they fall under, wouldn't it just be recreational vehicle?
I think.
Or mobile home, yeah, either one of those. What does two hundred dash five actually say that what are those special regulations?
Two hundred.
I'll pull it up.
A mobile home or manufactured.
Say anything about living the habitation part?
I, I think that's the part that allows you to have one for thirty days when you're visiting.
Yeah, I can read it off for the board. So one prohibited use, not more than one mobile home or trailer shall be placed or allowed to remain on any lot. Two, no mobile home or trailer shall be occupied for dwelling purposes, except that a mobile home may be occupied for such person. Purposes by one or more persons on temporary visits to the town, not exceeding thirty days in any successive twelve months. No mobile home or trailer shall be placed or allowed to remain on any land rented or leased for such purposes. Um, shall not be permitted after the effective date, uh, except for existing trailer parks. No object originally designed as a mobile home or trailer, designed for residential use, shall be maintained on the lot for the purpose of storage. I'm paraphrasing.
That all goes to mobile home, right? It doesn't.
Is that? That's the loophole, so recreational vehicle, there's no thirty days.
Right.
Signed.
I mean, we could say for dwelling, we could just put in the, in the table, the same language from section two hundred five to. Just, you know, recreational vehicles used as dwelling units. You know. Not exceeding thirty days in any successive twelve months.
Just refer it, just refer it to that section two hundred dash five.
Right, I guess the concern is that it, that mobile home or trailer does not include like a recreational vehicle under the current definitions because. The recreational vehicle specifically something with its own engine, that's not being towed.
No, it's a fact, it's either. The fact is, this is a statement that it's on the unimproved, unoccupied lot, which is really. You think that's adequate or no? I mean, I know people can get creative with anything, but.
Yeah, where we have to change the bylaw, two hundred dash five. I, this is the creep we have. So recreational, you're right, it's either under its own power or tow or towed, either.
Yeah.
The, the problem is not people having a mobile home and having it registered, having it parked in their yard. It's a registered motor vehicle, it's there, they may have power to it to keep the dehumidifier running, that's, that's not the problem. The problem we have is, is people saying, well, I'm going to camp out on my lot in my recreational vehicle while I build my house and it takes five years. You know.
Right.
I'm, 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 I bought this lot and I bought this recreational vehicle for cheap. And I'm going to plunk it here on the property and it's, of course, it's always right next to somebody's house, it's not. You know, those, those people had to build the house that complied with the zoning bylaws and the setbacks. And now we have someone that's, that, that is, it's a little bit of a, and back to the whole deal, these, these bylaws were written. Originally written back in nineteen eighty seven, six, five, you know, into there. Yeah, it was, it started in eighty five, it got approved in eighty seven, or maybe eighty four, and it got approved in eighty seven, and nobody contemplated. Having anything but a house back then.
Or air being, being your trailer in the backyard.
That's why I didn't know. It says unimproved, unoccupied lot, it's kind of catch all. You know, like you said, so, somebody having somebody visit and they've got the motor home hooked up to the house for a month, so. Is it really, really the problem is people are taking unoccupied property.
Yeah.
And having a permanent campsite on.
So I think we're all in agreement, how do we say it?
Yeah, I mean, I think.
The way, the way that, the way that I would, the way that I would say it, I would say recreational vehicles used as dwelling units. You know, accepts, uh, you know, by one or more persons on temporary visits to the town, not exceeding thirty days in any successive twelve months. I mean, because that would like, you know, if you're looking at a lot that's partially improved, that would still include that. You know, if you're looking at a vacant lot, it would still include that, that's like, I think, I think focusing on the vacant lot thing is a little. It, I think it just pigeons, pigeonholes you. The main issue is people doing it for more than thirty days, like, you know, if someone has a lot adjacent to their house. That, like, that's where their parents are parking it. I don't think that's like, you know, if they have a separate lot that's vacant, I don't think that's like. The, the issue we're talking about, but I think just setting a time limit, I think thirty days is reasonable. It's like, you know, that includes these sort of uses, you know, these sort of allow, you know, the uses that the board wants to allow, you could always make it shorter. And then point to, like, I, I just think like you want to have parity with what's in the, what's in the existing bylaws if we're adding this definition. But I think just putting that in the, in the table makes the most sense.
I think what you said, Gabe, makes sense, just say, yeah, there, there may be a reason for someone who has the undeveloped piece of property. It would, would not be unreasonable for them to come and visit for thirty days.
Right.
Yeah, and, and like you say, parity there, so if we say recreational vehicles use as a dwelling unit, except for. Thirty day. Any third.
Yeah.
Is in a one year period.
Yeah, here, I'll take, I'll like put in the language I'm thinking about.
But you do really don't want somebody. For more than thirty.
Not more than thirty days, then we could turn the whole thing around and say it's yes. Right, if you say for not more than thirty days, then you can make it yes in the table.
Sure.
Right, because the defining factor is thirty days.
Yeah.
And it looks better.
We're open.
We're open.
Let's say human habitation, maybe if you want to mirror the line E.
Yeah.
Calling units, so kind of.
Used for human habitation. Yeah, so I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking about how to phrase this.
Have to exceed thirty days.
And then you twelve consecutive months.
Right. And then turn.
I'll say, I'll say for temporary visits.
Now. Not exceeding thirty days in any, any suspected twelve month period, okay, and then you can make it yes.
Yeah.
Any of the categories the board feels comfortable with or make it, you don't want to do S P.
Thirty might be too tight even, I mean, what if they come for the summer?
Well, so do you want? Lenaco Lake and I just want to come every summer and throw my trailer on there and live there all summer and then take it off at the end and I'm not sure.
You make it, I mean. You could make it, I mean, you could add an exception for like, you know, if, if there is like a legitimate construction use. Or you could just like make it ninety days and then you could include the sort of edge case. Of like a summer visit or again, that could include like a legitimate construction use.
You should just hold thirty days, because Kirk can speak to this better than I can, but I don't think Kirk, Kirk's intent to go knocking on their door at the thirty first day. We're not looking for a problem, we just want to have some sort of way to enforce the bylaws with some sort of deadline, like it show.
I mean, it's, it's, it's similar to the yard sale issue, you know, this is a way to identify, like, you know, if there's a problem situation. Have a rule in place, but like, you know, if some, you know, we're not talking about, you know, like you said, no one has the time to go after all these. Little things, but if there is like a big problem, this would be something to point to.
Right, do, do you want to allow it in C B I G and B E P? It's already, does it hurt anything?
Because these could also be a truck camper on the back of a pickup, so it's no bigger than a truck. Not necessarily a bus.
I, I don't think it's a problem.
No, and I mean, there are residential properties.
For thirty days, I don't think it's a problem.
I'm glad you're going to see it parked over there.
He's got his mobile home right there.
What is he living in? Can I prove that he's living?
No.
Okay. If that was a person doing the complaining, be able to prove that he's living here.
They better be able to.
Have to be able to prove it to me. Or it has to be obvious to me. Or to the zoning board.
And you see the, the whole Lenaco's coming out.
Thank you, Gordon, thank you, John.
Do you have anything else, Kirk, that popped up?
No, the only other thing, um, actually, yes, there is, not that popped up. But when we were, you know, I gave you a bunch of paperwork and. Last time. And, and I've suggested the board before. That, you know, you've added a lot of S Ps to the table, some of the S Ps are covered by certain sections because business enterprise park special permit is covered by a set of criteria. And I wanted to have a discussion or let, let you have me have a discussion. Unless addressed elsewhere in this bylaw. The planning board shall use the following criteria for granting a special permit, okay, and this is written out here. Because I think it's fair to the applicant and fair to the board to have some measurable criteria. To judge whether or not a special permit should be handed, you use that in B E P, you know, use that in other cases. So I wrote down, does not result in unreasonable noise over glare, right? We have some of these uses that are, like I said, are not defined under B E P's special permit or. What's the other one? Adult use special permit or, you know. Does not increase the traffic count by some number. Above the existing traffic count. Due to the lot size, provides more than the required setbacks to building structures and accessory uses, including parking or loading areas. Provides opportunity for services beneficial to the community as a whole. I don't know, you know, um, Gabe, where that, where that fits in, but you see where I, you know.
No, I see what you're saying, I think that's, I think that's a reasonable ask, um, I don't know if it fits in any of these three sections we've been looking at. It, this, so you're talking about a special permit broadly in every, you're talking about every, for every district?
Right, because they're, they're, like I said, in certain, certain things like business enterprise park, doing a, a business enterprise park has a special permit. It has some criteria.
Right.
Permit, um, the wireless overlay zone or, and the wireless. Tower, cell towers are a special permit, I think, in some cases, and there's some measurable. Fear for them. We allow, you know, wind energy systems in the backyard if they meet certain criteria, so just to, to add all. I, I agree that adding special permit to give more flexibility and a certain amount of control to allowing uses. That weren't allowed before is appropriate, but without having a yardstick to measure them against. And that, that is.
Right.
Apprecious when the board says, no, we don't like it, you know.
Right.
And, and the neighbors who are, are objecting to it are trying to dissuade the board from allowing it. Well, they're not happy with it, well, well.
Right.
The one issue we have here, though, that I agree with Kirk's. Comments that, that, that would should be in the bylaws and they do have some criteria to. You know, determine whether a special permit's appropriate. Problem is, we haven't noticed for that for the town meeting in the Warren. If this does not fall, we've only noticed for these two sections.
Two dot one and three dot one.
And yeah. Yes, the other option is to fall town, you know, special town, we know we're not done. But, and I agree with Kirk's ideas, actually very smart to do that, but I just don't know from. That we haven't noticed. In that town meeting, we can't just amend the bylaws.
No, outside, outside of the square of the Warren, and if you put it in section seven, which is administration, which is probably where it should go. Yeah, you haven't, you haven't noticed. The public.
They were very specific on the way they wanted it done, so.
Well, we're not, I agree, we're not done.
We brought up the issue with signs and it can't, Kirk pointed out to me. That's a can of worms in itself. Simple, you can't just do on the fly fix to it, you know, it's more.
Right.
That might be appropriate that, you know, we could possibly, and I think that needs to be done, you know, so that. Actants have some sort of guidelines to follow, but. I don't think that this particularly. But I, I do agree it needs to be done.
Yeah, I like the spirit of it and, I mean, I would add to that, the economic, I should bring in here, the Economic Development Committee has asked that we. Consider like a fast, such a thing as a fast track permit, that doesn't require ten sheets of vellum and a stamped engineer's print and all that. For something like a family daycare center. We, that, that's, to consider such a thing, it's a little lighter weight than a regular.
I actually, uh, developed one like that, the last municipalities that were called class one and class two site plans where. It broke down like, given, was there any addition to the building and it made it a much simpler process for an applicant where they didn't have to. Provide all that information, I mean, we've had some where, you know, based on our current bylaws, the way they're written. You know, they're not changing the building, not doing anything, but you go through that. For building is, you know, financially cumbersome, right, people, so.
And it could go in front of the board and then we could still say, kick it down to a class two permit, you need more stuff.
Right, if you felt it, so, I mean, the, the other option is, which I'm saying is a good one, is that we can. Table the bylaws to the fall and do it all at once, or we can take care of this now and then do any follow up things in the fall.
So I, I was shaking my head no.
And to table, to table because.
You, you folks have had this discussion and you see the amount of public input we've had here through this three-year process. If you don't put it before the community in a voting form, they're, they're always going to say, well, we didn't know what was happening. And, you know, it, it may be worthwhile to put it before the community, let some discussion happen. Consider, consider the mechanism because I don't know if the two, you know, when these little things pop into my head. Well, there's a change in the zoning bylaws voted down, does that put a two-year?
Wait.
Wait on bringing it back, so you have to be prepared if it's going to go down. To get up and motion the table as a strategy, but I'm looking at it as a strategy to get it before the, for you, for you folks to get it before. The most public that are, that are going to come to any of the meetings.
I know we could, I mean, try to just a lot more out, out of the book, to the public, you know, they, you don't want to overwhelm them. Meeting, so they're like.
Yep.
You don't have a hundred questions, if we do it in stages, it might be more appropriate.
Well, I mean, here we are tonight doing this again and. Is it public?
Lori.
People?
Yeah.
No.
Lori's here.
But 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 we know, we know.
We have one.
We have a good idea what's going to happen. You know, this, I'll render my opinion what's going to happen. Somebody, some one or two people are going to get up from town on town meeting floor with their book in hand and say, but this is the first I've heard of this, we can't vote on this tonight.
Well, it's not true.
Well, but it happened every time.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Can we?
I'm sorry.
What we have.
Yeah.
So we can present it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, so we've done.
Where we leave off, I gave in the chat.
All right. Um, so, yeah, let's, uh, we kind of got partially through the, uh, we got partially through the through the use and intensity regulations last time. I believe we're on section four recreational uses, is that correct?
I have some changes in three.
Uh, okay.
Um, if you go down, it has public, private. Um. Yeah, okay, and you have daycare B is daycare center, C is daycare center adult, C again is family daycare centers.
Okay, yeah, I'll change that.
And then all the other ones following.
Look at your numbering in letter, there's a lot of those that are are off.
Okay.
Definitely go through that again, because I see like A, B, C, D, one, two, three, G, F.
Yeah, for sure.
There's some, some are okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Before.
For.
So back to section four. Um. So, yeah, we have, um, standard golf and par three golf courses. Um, being changed to a to SP across the board. Um. Then we have driving ranges being changed to SP in R sixty, R forty and RSE. Um. Then we have, um, basically other recreational facilities uh, being changed to SP in R sixty, NB, V and CB. Um, massage parlors are leaving unchanged. Um, private membership clubs. Uh, we're changing so pre, you know, previously was only SP in in IG, and now we're changing it to to special permit across the board. Um, riding stables again, um, they're going to be prohibited in V IG and BP. And then every other district will be a special permit. We're introducing racetrack that is going to be, uh, not permitted uh, in every district except for CB IG and BP where they will be subject to a special permit.
At race.
Camp.
Or cars or.
Yep, cars.
Yeah.
Horses, cars, you know, you know.
Oh, whatever.
Yes. Um. Campgrounds, um, they're going to be prohibited in village IG and BP. And a special permit in every other district. Um, other private predominantly open recreational areas, um, it's going to be changed to SP in the rural districts. And then public recreational facilities goes unchanged, that's a site plan review, except for IG and BP.
Right, can we, can we change private recreational areas? But how can we legislate private recreational areas?
Wow. What it, what, what is a private recreation? What?
So I have a baseball field in my yard. I have a volleyball court, a private volleyball court on my property.
I think it's, oh, just meant for gain for profit.
So then it's.
I guess it's a commercial.
Yeah, I think it would be like if there was a, like a private, you know, baseball field, or you could have like a mountain bike park or something like that. Um, where you have to pay for entry. Or just like in a, you could even have like maybe like an event, like, you know, if you had private land that was being used for like weddings or whatever. That could potentially be group.
Probably turn up with the public, but you, but but it's commercial property, you're using it for mining purpose, so we'd have to get that. I think what you're saying.
Yeah.
Do you break that out for commercial purpose?
People over, we have volleyball games.
You charge them?
Baseball, just a bunch of friends in my.
Making very dear. No, I'm but, uh.
No. You just called it a club, if you just said friends and left it at that. It would have been okay, so she's the club.
I I think the intent is, you know, if we had a a situation like a five oh eight or some facility like that, that they could come to the board for a special permit, it's a site plan approval or a Y, you know, just to agree with the Y. So the planning board has some control over it. I don't think the intent is to.
My libertarian bed says we should regulate a private recreational field.
We recreate, we don't regulate a lot of private activities.
But for for gain for profit, we that.
Do we want to amend and just add for gain full profit at the end of the at the end of the subject?
With your original area for commercial use?
If you have a little league, would you want to regulate that? I mean, if you would make sure you might, I mean, if you say, you know, you had a private little league organization. And they had wanted to build baseball fields next door, one of the members own property.
I mean, yeah, you're a. You teach golf, you teach your family golf lessons, you know.
I think the differentiation has to be, is is.
Commercial.
Right, is it is it gainful profit?
Yeah. So that, that's why I would take take that out, like, is commercial, other recreation for gain for profit is C.
Yep.
Oh, true.
But but private.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a little overstepping the freedoms and liberties of our country loving citizens. Private jumped out of your head, that's right.
Oh, sorry.
Here's a stretch.
I said it's private.
No, I, I.
Recreational areas.
Gee, I don't think, yeah.
Really regulate them. For instance, I'm trying to give an example.
Yeah, has any, yeah, has there been an application come in under this category?
I live.
No, I don't think so, no.
In turn, unless they turn it into commercial, then we're all over.
Right.
If, I mean, it's just, this this one area is pretty heavy in the SP pen, you know.
Uh, just put the word commercial in there.
That's.
I don't see.
I'm wondering if you want to, if you want to put it in, you know, say, or other. So we're talking about J, right?
J, yeah.
Yeah.
Other private predominantly open recreational areas. Well, if it's an open recre, I know, and I'm trying to split hairs, if it's an open recreational area, is it a facility?
Well, it's a big backyard.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, what is someone, what is someone putting in there that would even need to come, like, if you have a field, if you own a field and you're not putting anything in there, why would, why would you even come to the planning board?
Yeah.
Why would you need to pull permits?
No one would ever pull a permit, they would just do it.
But I don't even know what they're doing, like, what are they, I don't have a good sense of what they would be doing, that wouldn't count under C.
Right.
And like, you know, if someone, like, if someone's going to do like, for instance, one could do like trail building on their, like, if they have wooded land or like a field.
Yeah.
I mean, that, you know, but that that's just proper, like, that could be classified as just like, you know, you don't need to pull a permit to mow your lawn or whatever. Um.
But should it, actually, should it just be changed to a Y?
Yeah, for game. I I don't know, maybe, I I'm getting, I'm getting swayed into bills courts, like, just take the whole thing out of it.
Take that out, like, no one would ever.
Or remove the whole, the whole line.
Yeah.
Just remove J completely.
Yeah. Because it's probably like.
We're all asking what it is.
Yes.
Yeah, no.
We're supposed to know.
With it.
I say we remove J, that becomes a problem.
I I think.
And then there later, that's right.
Yeah, so just.
I think that. I think that makes sense. I'm, if we can't figure out what we're even talking about.
Thank you. So for C, it lists several things, does that include everything? I mean, is there something or or like facilities?
I mean, maybe including.
Including indoor, outdoor theaters, physical fitness centers.
Limited to.
Indoor and outdoor tennis, racquetball, or like.
Or does it?
How about, we could make it including but not limited to.
Yeah. Good.
Just like, we're not going to list everything that'll come up.
Yeah, that sounds good.
No, that's why they pay me the big bucks.
To figure it out.
That's massage parlors and recreation.
I still don't. Always are, you know, if it's it's that that one that just confuses me, I'm I'm not sure whether you're trying to cover there.
I know. It's more the.
But what you're trying to cover is illegal anyway, so it wouldn't go in any district, is is my kind of point there, you know.
But it's kind of like, it doesn't hurt to leave it in there so that it questioned every game, uh, there's, you know, one for medicinal uses, we've already covered that, you know, and whether.
Yep.
Okay, should we move on to section five?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, we're changing retail establishments, uh, under twenty thousand square feet, um, from N to special permit and BP. And then over twenty thousand square feet, um, we're going to prohibit in V, uh, change to special permit in CB and change from N to a special permit in BP. Um. Auction galleries, um, which again, we, you know, pulled the definition of, um, we, uh, we're changing that to SP in every district except for CB where they are allowed by right and BP where they are prohibited. Um, hotels, we just changed the wording, um, not, you know, not any of the, uh, allowances. We're adding bed and breakfast, and then similarly with motel or motor courts. Um, we're adding bed and breakfast and changing that to SP in most districts except for CB IG and BP where they are, uh, where they're P. Um. Bunch of categories we aren't touching. Um, offices of licensed medical and dental practitioners limited to general outpatient care and diagnosis. Um, we are changing from P to SP in, uh, neighborhood business and village. Uh, the only districts where those are prohibited are the most rural districts, uh, sixty and forty and, uh, BP. Um, we changed the definition of automatic teller machine, so we are clarifying, we're talking about one separate from an existing commercial structure. Um. We, uh, we're adding, uh, animal and veterinary hospital, or just, you know, change the definition, um, we're adding animal kennel. Um, where, and then we have that broken into outdoor and indoor. We're currently, those are the same, uh, allowances across the board. Okay, we do have someone in the chat. Uh.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the update, Lori. Uh, Lori posted the, uh, the Celtic score.
Oh.
I I, the Celtics are either lost, lost by four points or or are losing by four points. I'm, I don't know what time the game started. Um. So, yeah, currently that is a special permit. Um, in R sixty through, uh, neighborhood business for animal kennel, not permitted in village and BP and P in CB and IG.
We got an update from Lori dating the third quarter.
Okay.
Oh, third quarter, okay. Thank you, Lori. Um, and then moving on to section, so we're not touching, um, any of the other uh, definition, you know, uses in section five, adult entertainment marijuana establishments, those are all changing the same. Um, or saying the same. Move, so we're going to move on to section six. Um. Unchanged until, uh, F, which is aircraft landing areas, um, for fixed wing flying craft, we're changing that from, uh, P to special permit in the in IG. Um. Helicopter or gyroplane landing area, um, is being changed from P to special permit uh, in R sixty, similarly being changed to special permit in IG and BP.
Okay.
And then we're at, oh, yeah.
Hang on a second, what is this note three? Oh, here it is, okay. It's about federally licensed damage or radio, okay. I was looking in the regular bylaws for the notes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Um. And then, uh, FF three, um, we're adding one for unmanned aerial vehicles and drones for a landing area. That's going to have the same, uh, permissions as helicopters. Um, new automobile sales and used automobile sales are being changed from P to special permit, um, in R RSE. And then we added automobile and or truck repair garages, not permitted in R sixty and R forty, special permit in RSE. Uh, site plan in neighborhood business, not permitted in village, and then site plan in, uh, CB and IG.
You also have that same thing listed under seven K. If you jump over to seven, it's the same.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, I think, I forget if we discussed moving it from, I mean, where does the board think that should go? I feel like.
I think this happened, uh, a while ago, maybe even before your time, the idea.
I think so.
Put all the automotive type uses together in the bylaws, make it a little more user friendly, so I think.
Okay.
Now the section seven and.
Okay.
Section six, I think that's how, why that happened. Because that's. For the automotive type uses are.
Yeah, okay.
I, yeah, I'll delete it from section seven.
So I have a question on unmanned aerial vehicles, UAVs, drones, et cetera, landing area, okay. I got my little, my little toy unmanned aerial vehicle. You know, when did, when does this want to come into play?
Yeah, but we're going to say for commercial purposes of that.
That's what I was saying, you know, somebody playing with their personal drone.
I brought this up then, but I thought we were, we we had ordered it for commercial purposes or or something like that.
I think it should be for commercial purposes, so there's a, you know, somebody having their private drone, they're just playing with it, maybe. You'd be in the yard versus.
I think, I I think that makes sense.
You too, because I don't want to get called up by the neighbor.
And this was a designated, well, so.
There'll be some.
You go a little bit further. I've got a business where I, uh, video real estate. That's a commercial purpose, but it's not a designated landing zone.
Right.
The thing was, it was a designated landing zone only for these uses. That's what.
Because like CM, because, because, you know, CMR PC has a drone, we don't have a land, it's a, you know, it's a handheld drone that we carry around in the trunk of someone's car, we're not, you know. And that's like probably the equivalent of what we're talking about in terms of a recreational use, we're talking about.
Do you want to add a weight to it? Something greater than five pounds?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know what the standards are on that. I think, I think when we're talking about, we're talking about building a landing area, not like, yeah, you know, because the uses have their own licensing. You know, if someone's using a large drone, they have to have, like, you know, CMR PC, we have people, we have to get FAA certified. Yeah, for for the purposes, so that already. Yeah, for for the purposes, so that already has its own licensing, um if you're talking about those large drones.
It's not the use of the drone, it's the development of a landing area for the drone.
Right, right. And take off.
Right.
Take off. I might. I might strike, but I think striking commercial purposes makes sense, cause if someone wants to build, if someone has a recreational drone that's big enough that they need an FAA license. I feel like that should follow the same rules as like, if you, you know, if you have a helicopter, you know, if you have a large vehicle that you're taking off and landing. Large enough that you need a landing area and you need these FAA, you know, you're not gonna get in trouble with the FAA by using it, I feel like. That should, like, I feel like making it commercial purposes kind of excludes that. You know, if we're talking about large scale recreational use.
We had a, you know, it's sort of like, if somebody wanted to go to Amazon last mile. And you know, they, they're experimenting using drones now. I think that was intended, they could do, you know, for that landing area, it would be appropriate to come to the board with a special permit. To show where it is, so we would get like any negative impact it would add around the surrounding properties.
Do you say, do, does it make, I I think it makes sense to remove commercial purposes as we discussed this.
Yeah.
Do we want to say permanently? Is permanent landing area?
Yeah, I think that might be the problem.
I think that might be it, it's just a permanent landing area.
And I think we we have to put takeoff area to, takeoff is more noise than landing.
Depends if it's crash or not.
Yeah.
I mean, landing and takeoff, landing slash takeoff.
Yeah, so like F, say aircraft takeoff and landing areas.
So permanent, raining slash takeoff area.
No, no, that's.
Now down here in the.
No, no, that makes sense.
Takeoff in the.
Do you want to make that permanent or just leave it as it is?
What are you talking about, your drone, weren't we?
Yeah, but it makes sense that in in the category F with the subs. Two and three.
Takeoff and landing areas.
Landing area.
Got it.
Right, and then it covers.
That covers all those, right.
Okay.
And then.
Okay.
Landing area in one and landing area in two.
So you want to make it takeoff and landing area in all three or just leave it at landing area generically?
If you change F to to takeoff and landing area, that'll cover all three of those.
And and you could take off that landing area in number one and number two. Cause it's implied.
Okay.
And number three, yeah.
So take, take, take off landing area?
Yeah.
Covered in.
Okay. Okay. So I will just strike this. All right, um. Moving on, um. The last uh on this page, um we're looking at uh. At P and Q, we're looking at taxi and limousine services. Um so that's sort of divided into no more than three vehicles and four or more vehicles. Um and so for no more than three vehicles, we're changing that to a site plan review. In V or in NB and CB. And then for for more vehicles, we're changing that to from a no to a site plan review. In R S E and the NV, which basically puts um. Those, you know, those districts in line in both categories, um there's still, there's still a change in industrial, um it is allowed by right. To have under three vehicles. And then um. For water storage tanks, um it actually cut off on my copy, but um we're changing that to um site plan review across the board for uh for R. Um then for T, um we just changed some of the language uh to clarify that we're talking to up to two thousand gallons of natural gas and propane storage. And then for W, um we made it commercial energy storage with less than or equal to five megawatts of power output. And are changing that to SP from N to SP in CB, so now it's a special permit in CB IG and BP and not permitted in any other district.
I'm acting, that natural gas, is that meant to be over two thousand gallons? Should the UN put with the house or commercial building that had a, say, a big propane tank or the heating? Cause what if it's over two thousand, that means you don't have to do it?
Yeah, what's, what distribution, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, over now.
Gas and propane storage up to two thousand gallons, okay, yeah. And distribution stations, um so the way I'm reading this right now is. Yeah. No.
You want it to be over them.
Yes, you want to be of over two thousand gallons.
Okay.
Would be over. There we go.
All right, thank you.
And my comment on that is that. And unrealistically, no low number. So for commercial purposes, um treehouse has got a thirty thousand gallon tank buried in the ground. Bay Pass has got a thirty thousand gallon buried tank in the ground, was it for E? Yeah. Um and that's storage, you know, if you're talking about, you know, if you.
What do you think's a more appropriate number?
So anything over ten thousand gallons has to be licensed by the board of selection, because that's a fire regulation, okay? So wha- what it, what what was this trying to? Trying to do?
I think it was uh back to the L and D plan, I think, how this. Came about.
So is storage, large quantities, is storage the issue or is large quantity or or is the?
I feel like a residential storage is not gonna get over a thousand gallons, I don't think.
Not usually. But we have, I know of one. Commercial facility that's got six one thousand gallon tanks on the ground. I know of a place right now that's got two one thousand gallon tanks on the ground.
What's Nichols have? He's got six?
His is, he, he is. Um, you know, a distribution facility, oil and gas distribution facility that was site planned approved, and those are two sixty thousand gallon tanks of propane. Go with that, that, so there's, there's, I see, you know, I'm just trying to get a feel for what what it is that the board was trying to.
I think the old gent.
So, yeah, I mean, so that it would be, anything under two thousand wouldn't need a site plan approval.
Right.
Anything over, you'd want to know where that was and what was around it, wouldn't you?
And yes, if if it was standalone. You know, if it's part of another product, if Amazon came in and said they wanted to heat their building with propane and as part of the site plan review. You know, that would be annotated on the property, part of our comment that it needs a license from, it needs certain permitting. And it needs a license from the board of selection because it's over ten thousand gallons.
So would ten thousand gallons be a more appropriate number?
Well, I I was gonna say, if it's over ten, you're. Over twenty thousand gallons would be allowed, it just needs site plan approval. Wouldn't you want to still give you some sort of site plan for that?
I think the number, I think the number should be at least five thousand, over five thousand, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Well, yeah.
Good, I'm okay with that.
So over five thousand.
I think that makes sense. Um, so then uh we're, I'm gonna move on to section seven, if that's all right. Um. Light industrial basically just changed, we're changing on the, on both the main industrial uses, we just changed it to be in line with the new definitions. Um. So and then the main change is that in uh CB, we are changing light industrial to a P from a, from a no. Um land and water recreation vehicle sales and service and storage yards, we're changing that from an, from an N to a P in a neighborhood.
Wasn't there some.
And that's.
Be on there. About public storage?
Yeah, just meaning a storage areas or buildings for assumptions as well, so it's same.
And municipal vehicles, so.
You think we crossed out public and then municipal vehicles?
That's what I thought too.
Yeah.
All right, okay, I will make that change. Okay. Um and then finally, the last section, we have section eight, and there are no changes to section eight.
Did we not get there?
Yeah.
Is that um storage that matters?
For which one? Where?
I.
I was.
Eight.
Yeah, we have emergency power backup facility with less than or equal to thirty megawatts of power output.
There you go.
As a generator, okay.
It's a, so.
Okay.
Thirty megawatts is 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 a pretty big generator. Um. An emergency backup facility with less than thirty megawatts is committed everywhere. For emergency power.
Less than or equal to.
What's the standard?
Well, we go with that large building like.
And.
Thirty, thirty kilowatts is. Yeah, yeah.
Okay, eight, I want, I, I emergency backup. Anything over thirty is not allowed.
Right.
Is it just permitted?
Is permitted.
And review.
Um but that's not right, that thirty's massive.
Well, that's probably, that's probably in line though, because. They don't, don't allow. Commercial generating facilities of up to fifty megawatts.
But this is for emergency power backup.
I, I got that, but so that's, that's two thirds, that's sixty percent.
But we don't allow five megawatts of battery storage, but we're gonna allow thirty megawatts. Our gonna see.
Well, that's the way, that, that's not a change, right? That wasn't changed.
No, that was in there.
Was it?
Yeah. Never had anybody apply. Can't think of anybody who.
So based on what I'm reading here, well, first the generator. Use only during brown and blackouts. Where Dayton's making the comment there.
Okay.
On a temporary basis, I don't know what, you know. You never know what you might need for. That's the whole intention for emergency, I guess, so not regular use.
Yeah.
If you think you need it, you need it, I guess, right?
Oh, I mean, that's, that's why it's emergency power backup is not generate their.
I'm okay with leaving it there, that's.
Yeah.
If you need it, you need it. I don't think anybody's gonna put a thirty watt, thirty megawatt generator in their backyard.
I don't think you're gonna put a thirty megawatt generator on a facility.
Exactly, yeah.
Not gonna, that's not gonna be cheap.
Yup, yup, yeah, okay.
Jay there, is that the same thing that we just went over under items?
Yeah, I was, I was just looking at that, um. It, it really wouldn't be, I would strike J because it basically covers, cause in the, in the old definition, you had it not permitted in BP. Um but now it's, now it's special permit in BP. And, you know, previously, it was basically, you could have it, but as an accessory use to a business in BP under special permit, so. I would strike it, cause we're basically like folding that into it, unless you wanna. Like limit in BP to just an accessory use for a business or industry, but I think that's kind of implied. I mean, unless someone's gonna put a helipad on their house. So I would, I would strike uh I J, eight J, if that makes sense. Is the board okay with that?
Is Lori all set with?
Yeah, well, I just, I wanted to back up a second before you finish up here.
Through the, through the chair.
Go ahead, John.
But going back to I, so. An emergency power facility with less than or equal to thirty megawatt, that could be a large facility, and you're gonna permit that in all, all spots?
Well, well, then you look at, and just to follow along, John, you look at number six, that communication transportation public utility. We've got K and L, so they're not emergency facilities, but then we are saying no to anything. You know, less than or more than fifty, except in a couple of areas. But you're not a murder, those are like.
Yeah, direction, should be catering.
And. And to the point we made, you're not gonna put a, an emergency generator larger than what you would need in any of those zones anyway, so, you know, it's less than thirty. A house would be what, ten kilowatts at the most?
Yeah.
Yeah, kilowatt, kilowatts, kilowatts, yeah, so, yeah, you're not, you're not gonna put a thirty megawatt generator in the residential area this day.
We just limit it to the size of the, the output of the building or the output of the, for the facility?
Should not exceed what's required for that facility, but I mean.
Yeah, I think that's.
I don't think anybody would do that, I mean, that's just incurring extra costs.
They, but they would be allowed to, Don, you know, just, I mean. The point being is, not we're trying to control it, but we're just, somebody comes up, they have a. A farm or something that, that it's like, hey, you know, I could, I can build this facility, cause just in case of emergency, I can go up to thirty megawatts. Then put this facility into to to store whatever or produce whatever. It just, I I think it just.
I guess the, the key, John, is like you're using it. For that property, you're not hooking it up to the grid. And maybe the assumption.
It should measure that property, that 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 should be the limited, the the arbitrary number should be that property, the output on that property or required for that property.
Will not exceed one point two five percent of full load capabilities on.
And and six K and L are kind of like, the assumption is you're generating and putting it out on the grid. But.
So do you wanna, so do you want to make a. Do you want to make I then, what you said, like up to one hundred twenty five percent of expected, like facility usage?
Or just say for use on the property and.
Yeah.
Not for distribution.
Well, you could do that for emergency power anyway.
Right, cause emergency power would have, by the way, the. Electrical code written would have to have a chance for a switch and would have to isolate that generating power from the grid, because you can't back feed the grid.
Well, unless it is the grid and they're saying we need an emergency power station right here.
Now they're going to DPU and.
They bypassed.
That it's not.
The one thing about wood, I, I understand John's point, but that becomes an issue on. He said, she said about, you know, what is one point, you know, hundred twenty five percent of the power output on the property? He said, she said about, you know, what is one point, you know, hundred twenty-five percent of the power output on the property? Who's gonna determine that, you know, when it's an emergency situation?
Do we just wanna say then, for on, for onsite use?
It might be take twenty for, for a single property.
Right, for onsite. Consumption or use or not distribution, whatever the language is there, I think for, for I.
Okay.
What would that, how would you say that?
It's gonna, it's gonna be limited by the economics of, of buying this unit, right? I'm not gonna buy. A generator that's four times the size of what I need. At ten times the cost of what I need. Just in case.
Right.
Because it was free.
If it's free, it probably doesn't meet the regulation specifications.
Still gotta burn a lot of fuel, I'm selling batteries, uh, I got an emergency power back. So I think, yeah, I'm fine with that change, yeah, works.
All right, is there anything else we want to address before? Moving on?
Is there a question about? You were. Laurie, anything from you?
Um, I guess, I just had one concern, can you hear me? Okay, sorry, um, on six K, back at six K. I don't feel strongly one way or the other, I, I was just raising my concern over permitting. An electric generating facility up to fifty megawatts in a community business. Cause honestly, you could have several forty-nine megawatt plants in a row. But more importantly, maybe allowing it in the business enterprise park zone, so you could have co-generating. And then eliminating it from community business, um, so that the power is actually. Could benefit a company. Rather than going to the grid. That's just something I wanted to throw out.
Yeah, I'd like in a community, in the business enterprise park.
I think that makes sense. Does the board wanna make that change at Lori's suggestion?
I mean, she does have a point.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Community business properties, you know, particularly on twenty, they can make it very visible.
The convenience needs of the community.
I do it.
I think community businesses, you know, designed to be storefront. Detail establishments, not.
BP property tends to be a larger parcel land where it won't be. Near the road.
P there, yeah. Good point, Laurie, thank you.
Thank you. Great suggestion.
See, that was worth sticking around for. Giving up your trivia night.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, but you wanted to watch the Celtics game, yeah.
I did, what's the score, Paul? They actually were tied up. Alright. Sorry, Boston's five five.
Alright, is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak or have questions?
Laurie, you had suggested someplace about deleting residential solar in the definitions. Because we already had large. Energy storage.
Yeah, it was under, um, I think you, I think you did, but now that you brought it up. Residential energy storage, um, it averages twenty-seven to forty kilowatts per single family home. Those are those Tesla batteries you guys discussed. So I, I guess you could. Include it, but I would also say it needs a definition or. Uh, but I wouldn't be at five megawatts, obviously. Just not to exceed a kilowatt amount that you choose.
I mean, right now, we have that energy storage, you know, limitation of five megawatts.
It's special permit.
Right, there's special permit, but. If it was on a house, I don't, I mean, I don't think it's not gonna happen.
You know, it's gonna be regulated by economics and what, you know, what, what the cost payback is of this. You're not, we have a few of them in town, a few of them have been permitted, and the most, uh, Laurie, do you remember what each power wall is worth?
Um, mean each container?
Residential.
Oh, residential, no, all I read was the batteries that are tied to your home. And your solar on your home, um, averaged twenty-seven to forty kilowatt. So if we kept it in line with, um, what we. Anything like, le- less than, say, two hundred and fifty kilowatts is still overkill, but at least the verbiage would be the same as. How we define solar.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, large solar is anything over two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
So say large energy storage, is it any over hundred and fifty kilowatts?
Um, you mean commercial energy, yes, I guess we could define it that way, correct?
So are we talking about introducing a change to the definitions or adding a category on the use table?
I think you probably do it right in this definition.
Okay. So what, what do we wanna change it to? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I'm not totally following.
More than two hundred and fifty kilowatts, but less than five megawatts. More up, up to.
Yeah, that sounds right.
Okay, so with more than. How much, two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, two hundred and fifty kilowatts is still pretty large. Yeah.
Yes.
By ten times, right, I mean, if you had a large building, you might.
Okay. Solar energy system?
No, the, the, the large solar energy system is defined in its by, in your bylaws.
Right, and you're okay with that?
Yeah, I think we, if that went to town meeting, I think the, all those definitions.
So why don't we put a definition in right under that that says large. Energy storage system is a commercial jet, storage system, blah, 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 blah. Over two hundred and fifty.
Putting it on the use table, does that do the same thing?
Yeah. Where are we talking about? What, what are we talk, where are we talking about a change to?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out, I'm suggesting that it would be better.
Put it as a definite, they're talking about putting it as a definition instead of the use table.
Okay.
Do we have it in use table?
We have large solar energy system, a commercial.
Yeah.
For the definition.
Right, well, what I, what we're talking about, or I'm talking about is. Copying that, copy and paste that language in and just.
Right.
Call it large. Storage system.
Energy storage system.
Yeah, give her the word solar.
Well, we have energy storage.
You do, yeah, you do have energy storage.
Not large or small, just what is energy storage, like battery. We just haven't said small, medium, or large, it's just energy storage. So then we could say in the use table, just a, a limit, a threshold number.
Right.
Alright, alright.
So I'm gonna strike the large energy storage definition and just look at. Adding the, the two hundred and fifty kilowatt limit. Or, you know, boundary in the, in the use table, if that makes sense.
Greater than, greater than two hundred and fifty.
You just gotta go back and take that out where you just typed in in the definition.
I did. Now I'll double check this before I send it to Randy. So, uh, is, is this satisfactory, or I'm, I'm sorry, do we wanna just make this generic energy storage?
The way it's written, uh, is the way it should be left.
Okay. Alright.
Yeah, this would be motion to both of caring, make a recommendation to.
Thank you. Are you guys gonna want me to come to town meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna come to town?
If, I mean, if you, if you guys, if, if, if you guys think it would be helpful, I'm happy to come, but I, you know, I think you guys also have a strong handle on this. And I've worked on it, you know, with me the whole time, so it's.
I don't think it's gonna be at town meeting, I mean. There might be people that will make amendments on the floor, which.
There are gonna be people asking questions on why are you doing this, why are you doing this, and why are you doing that? Fine item amendments, well, I don't think we should do that. Yeah, I think you, I think there's gonna be. Some discussion, like. I don't know if it would be useful for Gabe to be there, I think, you know.
It might be, like, it might be too political, not, not like, you know, capital P political, but just like, I don't. You know, if there's a controversy, I don't know, you know, I don't wanna be stepping on toes and I don't know the dynamics, you know.
Where's your sense of adventure, Gabe?
You know, you know what I mean?
It's up to you guys, but we, we don't wanna cheat on a good town meeting.
I think he's really gonna come from the board members anyway, it's, it's any events. Somebody's gonna need an explanation, they, they don't wanna hear from the board members on why you decided to do something this way.
The chair, so.
You will refer to the chair.
I mean, I think it would be stronger coming, I feel like it would be stronger coming from the board than from me, you know, who am I to the town, you know?
Right, so I, I think that you'll be fine.
Yeah.
The meeting will pass them on to you, because we'll have to make the amendments. Just send it to the attorney general, any amendment.
Right.
That's, that's what I think we should just, uh, role play a little bit here, because it's gotta be like. And we should allow campground, we should make a change to this line item. So they're gonna make a, an amendment, oh, I think we should do this. No, it's, it's, the whole thing is to protect the residents of town from, from. Yeah, this is, you know, it's not saying, you know, a lot of these special permits are, I'm not saying you can't do it. It's just, you can't do it everywhere the way that you wanna do it. So I mean, that's, we're not really changing anything to, to not allow it. Yeah, it's just, there's so much sprawl in this town and so many overlapping zones that, you know, what might fit in the zone. In one area may not fit in the same zone in another area, just because of, of the way the zones overlap in this, and it's a problem, it's always been a problem. So, you know, hopefully we can correct some of that as we go, look at the zoning. And fix some of that.
Through the chair?
Oh, hey, John.
I would think a narrative of, of just a, a couple, a minute introduction of why we, we undertook this. Yeah, maybe we could work with Gabe to, and ask him for any, you know, we, we'd send it and just some. Some help in, in presenting that, you know, we're, we're, we're doing it to basically to update our, our. Our zoning bylaws and to Don's point is that we've had a lot of overlap and it's sprawling, and. The bottom line is we wanna redo a master plan and we wanna be able to, you know, move the, the town forward into the. The century with, with pretty solid rules on how to develop the, the town. I don't, I don't know if you, have you, if you've done anything like that before, Gabe had a, just some type of introductory paragraph or.
I haven't, this was, so this is my first, uh, thing I'm taking to a town meeting. But I, I'm happy to help you guys, I mean, I do, you know, I, I, I write, you know, I'm working on master plans and stuff like that, I mean, I'm happy to help you guys write a statement. If you want, I can type something up and send it to Randy with the, with the edits we've made tonight and, you know, feel, you know, use that as you want. Yeah, yeah, Randy and I can work on something and, you know, however the board wants to handle it.
Have like a narrative as, like John's talking, it's probably a good idea, so they don't blindside people and just say, why are you doing this? A little intro would probably go a long way.
I mean, the more information we can get upfront to, to soften the blow of the, the lengthy, the read through would be. And this will be at the end of the meeting also, so.
Yeah, when people's eyes are crossing.
There's one article after.
Alright, go, we, on the table, we have a motion and a second to close the public here, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, Gabe.
Thanks, Gabe.
Thank you.
For all your hard work.
Of course, thank you so much, you guys have been very helpful. I appreciate working with you, bye.
Thank you. Alright, we have a motion to, um. Present this to that town meeting, these revised zoning bylaw amendments to the use table and definitions. Yeah, recommendation.
Yes.
Alright, all those in favor? It's unanimous, alright, great. Alright, next up, we got some minutes.
Thank you, Laurie.
Make motion, we approve March twenty-third. Twenty-four minutes as, as drafted.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 Make motion, we approve April sixth, two thousand twenty-two minutes as written.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Randy, you have any, any of the, uh, business, I know I'm a timer posting?
No, the only other issue, uh, to go executive session.
Yep.
We have a personnel issue, but.
Yeah. Everybody got the email today.
Correct, yeah.
Both responded, okay.
And I'm gonna meet with Andrew Monday, he requested that I, he asked if we could meet and sit down and talk about it, I think, I would be up with him Monday.
We were never even notified and, uh, you know, in, in a timely manner that we could react to it before they printed up the budget.
Correct.
I think they owe the board the courtesy to at least, you know, tell us in a timely manner and give a reason why, because it doesn't, you know, fall in line with all the other changes that have been made, but that's, I guess, a discussion for a later date at this point, so.
Just keep in mind, though, that this does go back to December.
Yes.
And although he said he did get in touch with you, or attempted to, but it's almost like hitting your head against the wall.
Again.
Still.
Yeah.
Everybody has a personal interest with the thing, or it's always, I don't know why. And the one thing I have to say that, actually, while board's here, is that however they, their processes for determining what employees, positions are changed or titles are changed, I think everybody should be held to the same standard. You know, in this department, they're required to write up a new job description, you know, we've had to follow all these steps and it seems that other departments, it's like, oh, here's your new job title, you know, it doesn't seem like that. We've all had to follow the same procedures, the planning board's been signaled out to, like, do it a certain way where other departments have not. You know, I feel that this department, should we, the planning board should be treated the same as everybody else, whichever method that is.
Right.
We all follow the same rules.
Want anymore, just call me.
If no one has anything else, I'd like to, um, going to, yeah, adjourn to executive session, national workshop, thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A, number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. An open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position for the public body, and the chair so declares to reconvene to an open session to take any action necessary related to executive session items if needed, to adjourn.
Okay, I'd actually just like to make a note here because we're on Zoom with John, but there's no real Zoom, so, and I don't wanna cut John out of the conversation.
Yeah, okay.
So.
But you, you can see if somebody else jumps in or else.
Yeah, let's see, I have to admit them in, so they can't just get on without me admitting them in.
Should we stop recording though?
I think if I stop recording, I might lose John.
Yeah, because you're gonna put this recording up online, so.
Well, let me see if I can pause recording, I don't wanna lose John, so hold on, John.
Hang on, John, here it comes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn at ten sixteen?
Oh, my gosh.
I'll make that motion too.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
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 John, looks like a nice hotel room you got there.
Yeah, it's beautiful Augusta, Maine. Nothing but the best.
Teachers in Augusta, I live about ten miles west of there, grew up in Winthrop, Maine.
Did you really? That's where our project is, right in Winthrop.
Oh, yeah, I, I actually, each was, yeah, that's where I born and grew up.
Really?
High school, can you get that from here? Yeah.
Nobody ever knows where Winthrop is.
It's a nice town, really nice town. I'll give you, I'll give the, the regards to the Randy salute when I drive through the town.
See if Randy's old girlfriend was still. Did I summarize it about right?
Yes.